Oh, okay, so it's it comes through JAP.
Yeah.
Right back to JAP. It's just okay.
Oh, they would access it from the executive checkbook.
Yes.
Okay, I think so. My concern is they have a forward rule that talks regarding.
Oh, I guess I didn't get it.
But if they're coming from the north.
Well, but if the, yeah, what they do is if it's wetlands crossing, they wait until it's frozen and. Yeah, they know. So. Um, yeah, that's my line and basically they'll do what Paul.
Well, they've seen it.
But um, my question. Well, because we've got until.
Uh, this has been your.
Yeah. Okay. You don't have to say that.
Wait, wait a second. You're now making a third person. Jimmy Scott. Yeah, okay, they're done.
Okay, I'll see tomorrow.
Now, did you have something else?
I know I should. Yes, it doesn't need one. Yeah, it is.
You did it already? Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. That we're coming. The veteran's only just finished.
Like the open this reading with the Pledge of Allegiance to require.
Which is.
Really? Oh, shit.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I didn't take it that way.
For those of you who like the camera over there, I'm sorry, but if I unplug the computer and the battery is dead, I can't get it going for a while. Next time. Uh, do we have any board of selectmen announcements? I have one quick one. On the agenda is passed out. As far as I'm concerned, on the Pledge of Allegiance, this war is filed with evidence illegal language. Illegal language should be stricken. I didn't see any.
Legal language.
Illegal.
Yeah.
So that should be stricken, please.
I think it was.
It was on the website also. I was wrong, strike it. Any other, uh? Announcements? We've got also two meetings coming up. We've got the Liberty Session that February. Uh, first. We've got the primary election presidency on February 11th. We have the town election on March 10th. They're all things that you can all attend.
Candidates' Day.
Candidates' Day is which March?
March 2nd.
2nd, yeah. Do we have any other announcements from the selectmen? Do we have anything for citizens forum? All right, let me just say quickly. I don't know, one person at a time, you all know.
I know.
All right, you're all familiar, I won't go through them again because you're all.
Go ahead, sir. Who had your hand up?
One, two, three, one.
Craig Clark. The seat, the telecom met on Monday night and we're trying to work with the Chamber of Commerce for a flyer to email out to everybody. To my knowledge, there's not been a response yet. That's all I have. This is regarding broad being. Yes, sir, it's our. Fiber regarding fiber. Since the town can't do it because it's electioneering.
It's not.
Well, there's some discussion. Just please.
Um.
We've asked.
I'll tell you why it's not.
We, we, we asked the Chamber of Commerce if they'd be willing to help us get it done. To do it external to the town. I appreciate it. And with regards to writing the voters guide, I think the committee was gonna do something on that also. For the town. I'm done. Thank you. You're welcome.
So, under. Under prudential affairs of the town, it's to do what's best for the town. Right?
You guys hashed it out.
Yeah.
I don't really care.
Well, no, it's.
I want to get it done though.
The Attorney General and Secretary of State said that if the selectmen decide that this is in the best interest of the town, it's not taking your political position, it's supplying, supplying information, then it's not electioneering.
Look at me.
You're the one who brought that free.
Oh, that. That was a political position.
I'm sorry. Someone over there?
No, I.
Oh, okay, excuse me. Ron Osmo, Thomas Road. Sorry about last Tuesday when they, my buzzer went off, that was a Amber Alert. I'd like to thank Board of Selectmen. For. The fantastic cardiac monitor and depurbulator that was purchased. That took care of the old one that was completely, you know, after fifteen years. Fantastic now. You know, and I think the citizens of the town would thank you the same way too because. That will save a lot of lives, especially us all the God people, you know. With the cardiac monitor, depurbulator, tremendous, tremendous piece of work. Thank you.
Why we were able to do it, huh?
Yeah.
This year we are able to. And three is in the corner behind him.
Bobby Hamilton, I just wanted to ask the board, will you give to Warren out of both final edits, will you be taking questions with that? Yes or no? Well, I'll tell you, can I tell you why?
Oh, I'll consider it, but I kind of wanna get to the point where we can correct language on the Warren articles that we need. And then we have, we need a vote so that we can post the Warren articles. And then we need a vote to take recommendations on individual articles, maybe at that point we consider.
Okay. With the petition Warren article, I do remember that Roberto, I believe it was you with the three petition Warren article, the two that went to the planning board and the road ones that went to this board. But um. I thought I remember you saying that all three went to NHMA and Town Council. And I know with the planning board that Kirk had read, you know, the replies of both Town Council and NHMA. And what I'm asking is, is it possible to read for the third one, what New Hampshire Municipal and Town Council did for the third one through the board?
Yeah, but I think we had the, we have a letter from Town Council on the road one.
You have heard.
Yeah.
And NHMA. Yeah, no, my question was, can you read them, like, like planning board do?
Oh, okay, 'cause like you say, I don't have the planning board one letter.
Oh, no. No, I, I mean, that was the planning board, I'm just talking about the other one.
Yeah, the one on the roads.
With this one.
Can you get that? Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's a lot in the language. And I think the best way is to amend it at the Liberty. No, because, you know, basically what he said is there, there's no definition for the way it's written, public highways, roads. And so. Basically, for your intent.
According to me.
Yeah, well, you said that what your intent was.
I signed.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I agree with it, but it's not, I'm not the originator.
Oh, okay, yeah, because I'm, and this was even mentioned under RSA 231, and that's the way that your board has accepted towns. That's um. It's, the board has the authority to accept a road as either a five or a six upon petition and public hearing, and that's what. And then the 67440A is a different process where they just accept them if they've been, you know, the, the zoning has never, I mean, it was done a completely different way. But anyway, Kenyon talked about the language, there's no definition for the way it's written. So.
Okay, two things. First, I wanna make Jim Quinn.
That was the first.
Okay, now you second. I already violated responding to Selectman Acer. Sorry about that. But anyways. First thing, my original question or comment was that, I wonder if I understand correctly what Selectman Acer said a little while ago regarding electioneering. The understanding I had from what she said was that if the town sends out an informational item, but without advocating that the voters vote one way or the other, but that's not electioneering. Okay. Uh, the other thing was in reply to what Selectman Acer was saying about the petition warrant article regarding acceptance of roads by the town. I'm sure the language can be clarified to reference the RSA it's referring to specifically in terms of rescinding the authority granted in 1990. I'm sure this can be resolved at the Liberty Session. So it'll be less ambiguous, that's my personal opinion. Right?
That's it.
Thank you. Anything else on the citizens forum? Appreciate it, thank you all. Citizens forum is closed, changes to the consent agenda. We have several things on it, Council's panel, 12320, Peter open, 12320 minutes for 1218, 19, 11320, 11520.
I just have a question, does everybody, I never saw your edits for 118, 1218 minutes.
I sent the edits to Michelle, I read through yours.
Oh, okay, 'cause I never saw what you said, so I just, okay, I didn't know if there was more that should have been changed.
No changes to the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the, accept the consent agenda as.
One second.
Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you, whole business, warrants, final edits. Sarah's gonna work the budget, we on this, we're up to version five dot one, dot two.
Not bad for a person's town.
She's pretty warm.
Yeah.
Is this, uh, we've got a signature page, is this what we want?
Oh, that signature page goes at the end. I didn't, I just gave her the language for the warning. That, I, actually, she doesn't have it on here. Oh, yeah. To the inhabitants. It goes at the beginning, and then I said, there's, and a signature page, right, they have to say it goes at the end. I'm not a good instructor. I have to think out loud.
We'll want to eat a lot of edits on this, directions and all that. See if Sarah's editing. The recommended votes from the PAC. Sharon, did you wanna announce your recommended votes or did you just want us to vote through this?
Well, you can go through them, but Budget Advisory voted zero, six to zero on all of them, except for the first petition one. And on that one, we voted three, four, two against it, and one abstention. Everything else, the other remaining ones, we did not make a vote on. And my copy is currently with Sarah.
Many corroborated messages.
Okay. So. Before we, um. I think these are all correct.
I have a couple of questions. Um, moderate beings, say, repented by forty selection, number two does not say that.
Well, we haven't gotten there yet.
We will.
I added that.
Sorry.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I, I added that to so that everybody know what the budget people voted for. I added after every, like, after one, after two, after three. And if, sorry, two, three, four, I just added them in if it was missing there. And one, I think one of the petition articles didn't have anything, and so I wrote in the word in blue. So it's on her copy if you need to see it.
That was fifteen, that was.
Yes, the last. Fifteen, yes.
Fifteen, it was added in the show.
Yes.
Um, the other point was that there's a reference to there is no tax impact, we don't necessarily have them on all of them.
No, I know.
And I was thinking on Article Two, is that permissible by the language of the bond?
Yes. The, it does say. Yeah, I, we, yes, we can put in there, there is no tax impact.
Right, okay. Just want to make sure that's in.
Actually. Even though the town has not adopted, um, the warrant article is read, I mean, a warrant article specifying that, um, tax impact, no, we did, pass it.
Oh, we did.
But you can do it anyway. You know, you know, the, um, the legislative, I mean, the governing body can, um, put in tax impact.
Right.
All right, you got that, Sarah? It'll be the same language that we used in. Out of late, at the very end, here is no tax impact period. We're just keeping standard.
Yeah, this doesn't, yeah, she didn't put a lot of the, um, the voters guide information, and as I explained to Sarah, that there's three different warrants that get done. One is the one that warrants people. To the inhabitants of the town. You know, that's the one that gets posted. That we sign after we prove everything, and then there's the one that has to go downstairs, um, to the town clerk to order ballots, and then there's the one that goes with voters guide.
Okay.
So, yeah, the formats are just slightly different going. Um, I was gonna ask if you wanted to, um. Reorder these in any way. I said, told Sarah that that might be something, um. Before we post them.
Right. Traditionally, we usually, we haven't, we usually put budgets, this is the second item?
No, some things have, are prescribed by law, bonds are first.
Got it, okay.
Capital leases.
Yep.
You are right.
Capital lease has to go before the budget.
We do, we do typically put that in a second, but we can't. Because of the one, because of the one. Which are.
Yeah, um, yeah, capital leases and bonds have to go before the budget.
I mean, they should approve the capital leases.
Correct. It said, yeah, they're.
Out of late. I appreciate the emphasis, but I'm not sure we should put something in bold. Yep.
On what?
Out of late.
I, you know, I'm almost, I, because there was discussion about that by the CAP, the CIP, that, you know, making sure people knew that it wasn't for future. Town buildings.
The way the language came out, it says, uh, to establish capital reserve fund, and basically for the repair and maintenance of existing town buildings, and existing was involved. It was to point out to the people.
Existing.
It's not, was not meant to mean huge buildings, but existing buildings that.
Well, 'cause there used to be a, um, a capital reserve fund for town buildings, and that was saving, I mean, that was like a savings account for new construction. So I think that was why Ellen wanted to differentiate.
Right.
'Cause we, that one, that's no longer existence.
Yeah, but like, existing was added already. I'm not sure that we needed one.
No. It's emphasis added.
I don't, I'm gonna have to put that in parentheses. I'm trying to be over there, I'm actually trying to. The Warren articles, if I find anything else, I want you to go, Sarah. We've been through this up to eight, nine times now.
So the only thing I was gonna ask, ask to think about was the fifty thousand for the highway department capital reserve fund instead of having it at the units to put it up closer to the front. I don't know, maybe the others are more important.
Yeah, all the funds, capital reserve fund.
Unless we put it before we eat. Just reverse eight and nine, 'cause that one may eight, if you move it to nine, that has no tax impact. I don't know, maybe it doesn't make me.
No, I think maybe keep the no tax impact before.
Yeah. May I get him to have a quick saying, yes?
Then, then hit. No pay from the court.
So the warrant, when it's posted, would not have any explanations in it. I know there are some with explanations and some without. So one with signature page would not have, um, any explanations other than the vote, the recommendations, those two go on the.
How many recommendations we have? Number six, that's an explanation.
Six.
The light. Number ten. Even on the petition warrant articles, we have these explanations.
Oh, I know.
113, 14.
Yeah.
In the reports, from that. You're gonna look through the answer, you should always.
Since we do have some explanations, you okay with the one on eight? In, um, comment, in voters guide?
Yeah, fine, the voters, kind of pushing.
Right, yeah, no, I, I.
Read it.
Right, that's part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, that was just, would be the explanation in the voters guide.
Okay.
This is the one we're gonna post without the explanations. And with the warning on the front. And the signatures on the back page.
Okay.
Can we finalize that? Yes.
Well, do you wanna discuss these before we finalize? Those two. So, I found something interesting, um, on the first one, shall the town vote pursuant to RSA 325, 5A and 4013, 5A? When I was going through old town reports that the Budget Committee and the Selectmen actually made recommendations on every single one article, which was interesting. But the old ones, they did, and I think part of the reason for that is people that can't, well, it's town meeting, um, for the most part, and even the running of SB two, they did. And it's, and I think that it does provide a, a kind of a purpose to people that don't have a chance to do a lot of research, that they, they hope that they can trust the judgment of their elected officials. And that they probably know more about the warrant articles than the general public. So, um, according to these two, that any votes are recorded votes, um, and that they, on all warrant articles, not just budget or special. And that they can be printed on, on ballot, um, next to the effective warrant. So it's just whether or not the board wants to put that on, we do generally do it on most of them, but we omit a lot of them. But, um, anyway, the PAC is usually at most of the meetings when these things are discussed or they get copies of them. So, I think that's, and, and if you'll notice in the old town reports, it was not called Budget Advisory Committee, it said Budget Committee. And then it said Advisory. It's, it's just interesting going back to our old town report, I was looking for something. Anyway. Um, the other one I suggested last year, and I know Bob, your objection to it was, we want the voters to decide, but that's basically what this is asking the voters to decide. Is if they're, you know, comfortable and understand that it might be more appropriate to appoint a tax collector after Carol's term ends. For several reasons, one is, and I can, this one I was doing research, I could never find where the tax collector and the town clerk both became full-time salvered positions. And, you know, the tax collector could be a part-time position. Well-paid, but it would still save us over twenty thousand dollars a year. And. If, if the board wanted to still make it a full-time, an appointed tax collector can actually do assessing clerk work. They, they can do a lot of the data entry. So, um, you know, I checked with NHMA and they said, an elected one cannot. But an appointed one can do other duties. So. This actually was in the town warrant about fifty years ago. It's surprising I found it. You know, and it didn't, it didn't pass.
So you're requesting it to be a warrant?
I'm asking if the board would consider it, yes. It says to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to appoint a tax collector in accordance with RSA 4133, rather than electing a tax collector. If passed, this shall take effect when the present tax collectors' term ends in accordance with RSA 4136. And that 4136 explains, 4133 talks about it, and appointed tax collector, 4136 explains the transition from, um, one tax collector to an appointed one.
I'm not, I'm still not in favor of appointing a tax collector by the selectmen. But then, but it raises a further question that this becomes effective when the term ends.
The term ends when she retires.
The term ends at the end of her term of life or office?
No, it actually doesn't, 4136 explains that the term ends when the tax collector. Ends it, or by the end of the term, either one.
And if the tax collector that's elected in the next election. Is a different person, and that term might not end for another twenty years.
Like, it says the present tax collector.
That would be the present tax collector, if there is a vote for a tax collector, somebody's gonna write.
How many years is the?
Three, three years. Three, three years, but no, the tax collector, no term ends until a week after the election. And the new term starts when they take oath of office, generally the Monday following the election. So the present tax collector would still be the one in office of the town.
My question is, if there's another person who runs, who gets elected, then you're saying that that person's election is invalid?
No.
Well, it would be, basically, it would be a moot point. But the, let's say we have two candidates, even one candidate, they're running for the office. And then, week after, you know, a week before they're elected, we have a warrant article saying the position no longer exists. The elected position.
I, I don't know, we'd have to ask, but basically Carol is in favor, is in favor of this because she understands the transition, basically what happens. If there is not a transition in place, the tax collector's office gets shut down. Totally.
And no taxes lost.
Yeah, yeah, well, and that's what happened when she got elected. You know, it was shut down for a couple of weeks, which is kind of a nightmare. The, the other thing is, the, who, well, Carol is running, it's Carol and Carol, right? Yeah, she needs to know that the position is not going to be full-time if she's elected. Because it is not, there's nothing that justifies that being a full-time job.
Unless it incorporates other duties.
And that, yeah, that we can't do.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
I'll take some comments.
Kellen Geiger, I guess this seems like just so last minute and real interesting because people are already signing up to run for this position. I think people have already signed up to run for this position without having this knowledge. And I'm not sure that that's fair to those people that have signed up. I would say, would you please put this off till next year's election? And put it on the ballot then if you so want to do that. But I just don't think it's fair since people are already signing up and then not having the knowledge going in.
Actually, it's not last minute, Kellen, it was brought up December thirty-first, actually was brought up before that. And, you know, we just never got around to discussing it further. And it was brought up last year. So Carol Donovan, you know, has decided to run for another term. But she had told me last year that if she did, she probably wouldn't serve full three years. You know, that her intention would be to retire.
I just wanna say again that people have signed up already to run for this position. And I think it's unfair to anybody that has either put their name in or will put their name in in the next week or so without having this knowledge. And I think it would be much fair to put this off till next year. Thank you.
Jim Quayle, I have two thoughts. One, I'm generally opposed to converting elected positions to appointed positions. The advantage of elected positions is it makes the town government more responsive to the will of the voters. I think that's a good thing. Secondly, I agree with Ms. Geiger that this is far too late in the process for the Selectmen to start discussing this for this year. Far too long. Done.
Thank you. Any other comments?
As I repeat, it saved the town a substantial amount of money. In order to be a tax collector, you have to be bondable. And you have to go through a background check before you pay the ser. Being able to hire somebody that has a financial background for the town makes sense. Tax collector isn't what it was fifty years ago. There's presently a bill in front of, in front of hearing right now, which stunned me. They're talking about making the, the town clerk a potential appointed position too. So I think that, you know, towns are finding that, you know, to get competent employees to provide the services required, that, you know, appointed is where they're going.
Sorry.
Greg Clark, so please clarify for me why fifty years ago was a very different position than it is today?
Yeah, we're not talking about the amounts of money or the record-keeping. Tax collectors used to collect taxes at their house. Actually, you had appointments, I, I just read the statute again, I'm stoned. They had to be open for two hours after the tax bills went out. And it had right on there, the two hours that you could pay your taxes. But it just, you know, the amount of money that goes through that office downstairs. And a lot of it, interestingly enough, is cash. You know, people come in and pay their bills with cash. So I don't know if they've been taking it out from under their mattresses, but, yeah, it's, the whole record-keeping is, you know, and computer skills necessary, not what it was fifty years ago.
Computers didn't exist fifty years ago.
That's right.
They did.
But that's right, they, they were huge.
They were analog also, they weren't like digital.
Yeah.
There are still some towns, I know even in Massachusetts, where tax collectors and town clerks work out of their home. They still do.
So as a follow-up, is this really a full-time job?
It shouldn't be.
No, but is it a full-time job at this point in time?
It is presently being paid for that, yes.
Is this person working full-time? And I understand she's downstairs full-time, but is the job really a full-time job?
No, Pat Hildrethu, as the deputy, said that, you know, she doesn't seem to work three days a week. Except a couple of weeks out of the year, you know, getting-
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, Peterborough, even the tax collector there, even though it is a full-time, it also does all the billing for water and sewer, which is a big job. So actually, the computers have, you know, lessened the amount of time needed.
We're not, man, he was posting anymore.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Charlie, I don't have a position, but from a voter's perspective, voter understanding, clarity perspective, it would probably be easier to understand if, if at the same time, you weren't voting for the position. In other words, if there's, if you didn't have a tax collector on the ballot, at the same time you have your question on the ballot. It might be easier to understand the question.
That's why I wanted to do it last year.
That's my thing.
Thank you, Charlie. I'm, I'm on the move. Actually, I'm going to the university on hours. Let's just be something that needs to be discussed.
Is that something in our authority? If it's a elected position?
Yeah, it, what would happen is it, it would go on the ballot to change the pay. Actually, the tax collectors are supposed to be paid a certain way. And I've never found where it was changed other than in the budget, which there weren't the same as they are now. It had a line for the tax collector that was operating and wages, not broken down. One, one line, one number, and the same for town clerk. And that was at the time where the positions were both held by the same person. So there were two lines, or one for each office. But I never could find a warrant article that said how either position was going to get paid because the statutes provide for payment in a certain way, or you could have a warrant article to change it. And Carol thought that it was back in the seventies. But that's when one person held both offices. And then when, twenty years ago, when Carol decided to own and run for tax collector and Nancy ran for town clerk, there was no warrant article defining the way that each office, you know, was paid. So it went from one full-time position to two full-time positions, and I don't know how that happened. If one person was covering both, how does it mean two full-time people? So whenever, I couldn't find anything in the town meeting results, you know, minutes that explain how that happened. Which it does, it's supposed to happen by both.
Should have been about twenty, three years ago when that happened.
Carol thought that the, the pay, the way it was paid, almost like an employee was set up, was much earlier. You know, before she got, you know, was, was elected.
Previous town clerk, who also, I believe, did the tax collecting.
Yep.
Is living in town right now again.
Right, Sharon. But she, Carol was pretty sure it was way before Sharon, even. But I, you know, it's like-
But I think Sharon did both positions.
Yes. Yeah. So I think, you know, the only way to change, to do something, I, I don't even know, to do something about it, is to find where it happened. And if it never happened, then it needs to be a warrant article to designate the pay. I, you know, it just-
Actually, you know, at least for the town clerk, it's supposed to be voted on by the public by the legislative body, the salary. Generally, I'm thought that they vote the salary based on the budget by voting for the budget.
That's basically, you know, because it's, it's a line item in the budget. And that's basically what's happened now, but if you go back into the seventies and eighties and nineties, it's not delineated the same way, so it's like, I don't know. And, you know, they, the budget was presented in a much different fashion on the town meeting than it is now.
The former governor, I don't want to leave this here.
Jim Quayle, what is the deadline for finalizing the warrant for presentation to the deliverer section?
I think it's the twenty-seventh.
It's the last Monday of the month.
Okay, so it's coming up pretty soon.
Yeah, it's a week from Monday, a week from next Monday.
You've read my general view on keeping offices elected. But regardless of that, it seems to me that you need considerably more time to finish doing research. One, documenting how much work is really required for this position. And secondly, developing a case present to the voters. Reiterate what I said earlier, I still think it's much too late to start, to start having this discussion at this point in this year's election process for the town. And one further thought regarding the desirability of electing town officials. Tax collector's a very important position, and as long as the position's elected, if the voters in the town have a sufficiently unhappy experience with the tax collector, they have the option now of electing somebody else without having to depend upon appointment by a board of three people who, who knows what their individual agendas might be given a particular individual in the off, in the position. So those are my additional thoughts. I think it's just way too late to have this kind of discussion in this process. That's my thinking. Do your research for next year, if you want to pursue it.
Well, there's just nothing. I, you know, I read year after year, and, you know, and it's like, I don't know how this happened.
But part of it needs to be researched, is the question of whether the position really does require a full-time employee. I've heard opinions and assertions based on anecdotal statements from, from yourself and one other individual. And it needs to be more thorough than that, in my, in my opinion.
Most towns our size do not have full-time tax collectors, unless they perform other duties.
Refer my opinion in terms of what is necessary to present a convincing case, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm moving along. I just say I want to favor it. You want to make a motion, make a motion, we'll go from there.
Well, I just, you know, as I brought it up in December, because I really thought, I thought we just, we've been rather busy on other things. So, you know, the bond was the biggest thing, it's the biggest priority. As I say, Carol, you know, actually thought it was a good idea to be able to, you know, find somebody that has a financial background and to get trained, you know, when she is ready to retire and can give notice. So it would save taxpayers a lot of money.
I'd like to look at it, so I have a prior, more so on town clerk versus tax collector. How would you work when you get elected, and which needs to be elected?
Yeah, well, it's town clerk as of now, difference from what the legislature does.
I don't know what the legislature's gonna do, but they got about two thousand bills presented for next year, and they won't deserve that.
Yeah, I'm gonna be joining up tomorrow.
They just want, they're, I won't be able to. There's too much on my mind to get into the conversation right now. I'm signaling emails to the governor and the state reps and the state senators and Colby and Gray, and Colby and Gray.
Yeah, well, no, I'm gonna go up there tomorrow because the pension bill, it's like the last straw.
It's going crazy.
Yeah, we saw that one, it's tomorrow.
I haven't seen that one, I've been following others, five others.
Oh, this one's another pension bill that's gonna add another five million to our unfunded liability. Let's see.
All right, do we want to make a motion, or are we just gonna move this along?
My feeling is that it needs to be looked at seriously. But I am a little bit reversed to doing it this year because of the timeline, it's just a little too close. It was raised last month. You know, in my mind, it always is that, you know, a part-time position. And especially since we have other duties that we're trying to cover, that we need to look at what the position is. And if we can redefine it. I don't know if we can do that after the election, you know, to require other duties later. Because you're electing someone for a position with certain qualifications and I don't, I don't see how it can be done this quickly, so.
So, and yeah, I, you know, doing it next year, I don't think Carol's gonna retire in a year, you know, so.
This is another issue I've been having, is that a, this should be done for the position and not for what people we have right now. And that, that is, that can be an issue because it could appear to some that it's basically manipulating or changing the rules to fit the people we have, as opposed to saying, this is what we need, and let's, you know, get the people right for it. I'm not saying it is, but it's, you know.
So when this was written, I didn't know that there was two people running. So if, the thing is, it, it would be really hard to say, okay, we're gonna do an elected, I mean, an appointed tax collector, effective March, whatever it is.
April first, let's say, whatever.
And, and tell Carol, you know, she's not getting any more retirement pay.
Right.
That's why I said, you know, instead of saying, Carol, your position's gonna be part-time. The other thing about having an appointed tax collector is you, because they are employees, you can do the hours that they work, that's the most convenient for the public. Which I think tax collectors, because a lot of people like to come in and pay their taxes. I think that they should have evening hours. I mean, the town clerk works, you know- I mean, the town clerk works, you know, and you don't have any authority over that of an elected position, so.
But the only authority is Jim says to vote. You don't like the hours mentioned it to him, you can still vote for the hours, you vote them out. Just tell them you don't have a job as you want.
I know, but, you know, the number of people that, you know, are been unhappy with somebody that's been doing it for, you know, over twenty years is, you know, not, I don't think I'm gonna make a dent in the vote. You know, Carol's been, you know, she was doing it when she was both positions and that's in twenty-five years, I guess. Anyway, so, yeah, you know, depending upon what happens with the election, doing this at the next election with the same language, it makes sense because then if it's an employed position, yet the voters decide that that will work for them. But we, you know, then it can be a part-time job easily.
Can we put the motions work long, closely later for vote for the town? That's part of the town meeting.
Right, well, no, it's, that's true.
The other thing is move on over this to show the town vote. We say to require all votes on recommendations. We record all the votes that are taken, if we don't take a vote, we don't report it. But when we are required to take a vote on certain, on warrant articles, we do.
Well, this also has the budget committee vote on, you know, they can choose to vote on all of them instead of just the ones that they do which are budget-related. I have financial impact. I know the previous boards, ever since we've been SB two, we've been doing that. They did it actually in the town reports prior to SB two, but at that time, they, both boards voted on every warrant article. It's in the, in the town reports. So they just did it as, you know, as custom.
I don't think they've prevented voting on it many times, but they, we're required to vote on some. BAC may be required also to vote on financial.
Yeah, anything that's, yeah, financial impact.
So is this another warrant article being proposed?
Yeah.
Carol?
I, well, I see, well, there are two here.
Is the first one necessarily a warrant article or can it just be done?
We've been doing it for the most part, but if it's a warrant article and the town votes to do it, then it must be done, not.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, there's no requirement for it now.
Could you please tell me what it is?
That's the first one that we read.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Shall a town vote pursuant to RSA thirty-two, five, five A and RSA forty thirteen, five A to require that all votes on recommendations on budget items or warrant articles by the governing body and the budget advisory committee shall be recorded votes and that the numerical tally of such votes shall be printed in the warrant next to the affected warrant article.
Don't we do it wrong? Isn't that done already?
Not on all and it's not a requirement, it's just been done.
It's not, it doesn't say that you have to vote, it still does not say you have to vote on all warrant articles. It says you have, that all votes on recommendation.
Correct.
Be recorded, it does, it still does not say that you have to vote on a warrant article.
It doesn't, it, well, if you read the statute, it's a little more clear that it refers to all warrant articles, not just the budget, voting on budget.
The statute says, I've read the statute before, it says that all votes, basically it should have been taken or recorded. But this does, still does not require a vote to be taken, it still just requires it to be recorded if it's voted on.
Yeah, and if the board chooses to vote on something, then it shall be recorded.
Which we do already.
And if we choose not to vote on it, you don't have to vote on it.
Correct.
And there's no record of it, so we don't have to record a vote.
Yeah, one of these is from the budget law, that's thirty-two, five. And the other is from duties, just duties of towns.
I need to read that before I make a decision on it.
Yeah, basically, it's mostly what we do now, but there's no requirement to do so.
So we're gonna have a warrant article to do what we already do?
Well.
But requires to do it.
The voters understand. Thirty-two.
Do you have a question, Cheryl?
You look like you did and you didn't.
Well, yeah, I just wonder, because the vice advisory committee has a statutory responsibility and selectmen have a statutory responsibility. And they're going to be voting on warrant articles that are relevant to their responsibilities. What I'm understanding Reberta to say is that if someone has a petition warrant article, that if it has an impact on a town, you would want the selectmen to provide guidance. If it has an impact on taxes or costs, that you want the BAC to provide guidance. But if it's neither, why would you want the BAC to vote on something that has no financial impact on a town? Or why would you want the selectmen to vote on something that has no impact on a town at all? I mean, as a practical matter, I just wonder why, you know, what the motivation was for trying to require votes on all warrant articles when you guys have a statutory responsibility to the town.
Okay, the legislative body of any town, school, blah, 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 may vote to require that all votes by an advisory budget committee, the governing body, school, whatever. All votes to the governing body relative to budget items or any order shall be recorded votes and the numerical tally of any such vote shall be printed in the town. Unless the legislative body has voted otherwise, the governing body or budget committee may on its own initiative require the tallies of its votes to be printed next to the affected article. So it can be done either way.
Still does not require them to vote on everything.
That's under, it says relative to budget items or any warrant articles.
It doesn't, but it still doesn't make a requirement to vote, it makes a requirement to record any vote taken. We mentioned this before, it's why I'm having trouble.
So why, well, I guess I'm gonna give a question, why should we pass this, try and get this warrant article passed? Or put it on for the voters to decide?
I think that it will stop any waffling.
Okay.
You know, well, I don't really wanna vote on that.
Then don't vote on it.
Yeah, we'll show your example back tonight.
Forty thirteen is a different one.
So are we gonna make a motion to put this in a warrant article?
I'm a little concerned about what we're reading. I mean, I'm reading the thing right now.
Well, that's directly from DRA, the language. The legislative body may, may vote to require that all votes by an advisory budget committee, town, governing body, all votes to the governing body relative to budget items or any warrant articles, valid questions shall be recorded votes and the numerical tally of any such vote shall be printed. It's exactly the same and it says in warrant article, it does not say special or only budget.
But it still says votes on any warrant article, any warrant article. Can't record a vote if you don't take a vote on it.
Anyway, so shall we go on to these and then we can think about that? So. I make a motion that we post articles two through sixteen.
That's all excluding the correction of all of this.
Well, we actually have already done a couple of them, but we're doing them again. We've already done two, three and four.
Yes, we have.
So a motion to post articles five through sixteen.
Have two, two through four been amended since they were posted?
Oh, you know what?
So if, we should repost it if it's.
I'm going back to my original motion, I make a motion that we post. As before us, articles two through sixteen to the warrant.
Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
Need further discussion of posting of two through sixteen to the warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So are we all set, did that together? Well, we should be able to sign this in briefly on that last page.
Oh, Eddie, well, no, she can just put it out like it always, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't have, yeah, we made a motion to post it all. So I make a motion to rec, vote to recommend articles two through ten.
I'll second that.
Okay, those are all the warrant articles that were posted by the selectmen.
Correct.
I've got a motion, a second. Need further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So it was two through ten, so we're voting to recommend, that wasn't the recommendation vote, correct?
Yes. Now you ask.
Three to nothing, I knew I heard that. It's three to nothing vote to recommend the warrant articles two through ten, so it's three zero for every single one of those. If anybody wanted to vote, no one did, wanna go along with that, I said, we'll hold it on.
So the petition warrant articles, their opinions, you know, letter was fairly strongly worded that he thought that the board of selectmen should vote to not recommend passage of them. So I don't know if he wanted to, you know.
To be quite frank, all the petition warrant articles, I don't wanna vote at all. Gary Kenyon can say what he wants, that we should vote, we should do this. Gary Kenyon is not elected to a petition of this sort, he can't tell us that we have to vote on it, but we vote we should vote.
No, he said, he recommended.
To vote against, right.
To not, yeah, to not recommend passage because of the confusion that it would cause in passing, something, you know, can't be put into effect.
There seems to be a mistake on article eleven on the recommendation, BAC that thought.
Yeah, we already discussed that, it's three, two, one.
Yeah.
I know Bob doesn't wanna take a stand on article eleven, you know, I think that it's too costly. I think that, you know, if they had asked to increase it by five hundred dollars, but, you know, that's huge. That's like passing a fifty-five thousand dollar warrant article every year to pay for it. And actually, it could be more. I know one has moved out of town, sold the house, but I just saw applications of two more. Actually, it's three more, so it's pretty expensive. I know Roger, Jim Roger said it was for the widows, but I know that we don't have that many widows in town, that's for widows.
Can you reform what you're talking about?
Oh, this is article eleven on the vote to increase the. Opt shall veterans tax credit for service connected total disability from two thousand to four thousand. So that would be a tax credit, which means that's taken straight off as two more thousand dollars off their taxes.
I think a lot of people think that the tax just goes away, but it doesn't, the rest of us have to pay it.
Do we have any more of these warrant articles? I'm gonna, I've got just one extra copy, I'll leave it here if someone wants to read through it.
I don't, on the basis of, you know, price what you want.
Sure. The state had authorized the increase from two to four thousand and so the veterans are taking advantage of that, which, you know, there's. I don't mean that in a negative sense, they're, I'm not seriously going, asking for four thousand.
They're asking for it to be doubled.
Right.
From, we allow two thousand now. The actual one that's mandated is like six hundred dollars, I think, and the town go to increase to two thousand and now they wanna increase to four thousand. Which is a lot.
Would you like me to speak to it?
Actually, yes.
Does it, well, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to speak to what the thinking was?
I kinda know what the thinking is.
The long and short of it is that the veterans, the rich veterans discussed this and decided that it would be an opportunity to take advantage of for people who are one hundred percent disabled because of either war or other activities during their service period. So if the option was there to offer a four thousand hundred for RSA, that's what we did.
Yeah, but you have to keep in mind that even though the VA says they're a hundred percent disabled, does not mean they're not out making sixty thousand dollars a year on a job. And that's, that is absolutely. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's not a level playing field, you know, it's, it's not, it's not.
What I wanna do is get a recommendation vote, it's gonna be able to be taken on a warrant, data. You said we brought forward it, the little session. Any more questions?
Yeah, no, you spoke to it last year.
I did.
That was.
Yes, he did.
Oh, you just said what it was.
I spoke to it while we had proposed it as a warrant article. And I will speak to it this year, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Don't be able to talk to me, I'm not sure you get more questions answered, to the sixty people that come.
There might be more this year.
Well, town was here, so. That's even worse, worse. Did anybody wanna vote on this?
Yeah, I do, because I can't, I can't vote to support it, I think it's, I think it's excessive.
Make a motion to vote on this?
I don't know if Carl wants to vote, I know you don't.
I mean, I think it needs more, I need to look at it a little bit more. I mean, I think it needs more, I need to look at it a little bit more. I think four thousand is excessive. I think three thousand, twenty-five hundred is possible. I'm curious as to how many people, because here's, here's the problem. You get these, let's call it a benefit, and it's, it is not a level playing field. You have some people who desperately need this and are paying it off to their houses. And then you have some people that it's, it's just nice thing, but then again, if you're totally disabled serving your country, you know, you should recognize that in some way that people shouldn't risk losing their house. So it's, you know, I don't know if four thousand is appropriate.
Well, this actually is kind of a misnomer because it, they, it's actually, they personally get twenty-five hundred dollars.
This is added on to the five hundred? I thought it was, it said.
You get the veterans' credit?
Optional Veterans Tax Credit. I thought the optional was that you choose one or the other.
No.
Okay.
No, you get the veterans' credit, and then there's one for the disability, which is the two thousand on top.
That's on top of the five hundred?
Yes.
You can pay the voter on this, probably.
I, I think I might want to amend this at the deliberative session. But I'm not ready to vote on it yet.
Yeah, well, the only reason that we put in the tax impact last year is because we actually could identify how many people are presently receiving it and what it would do to increase, what the increase on taxes would be. This year, I, you know, I can't imagine that it's going to be less. As I said, I saw, you know, where somebody had sold, but I don't know, they may have just mentioned another house, which, you know, then it goes with them. And I saw like two new applications for it. One of them has no paperwork to substantiate the claim, you know, they just check the boxes off.
I have a question, Jim Quaid. This is going, this warrant article is by petition, so it's going on the warrant documents.
Right.
Exactly.
The question before you guys right now.
Is voting on it.
Is whether or not you're going to vote to recommend. Well, speaking as a member of the public, I really don't need the board of selectmen to recommend to me how to vote on petition warrant. I think it's, I think it's kind of a discourtesy to the people who go to the trouble to submit petition warrant articles. It can be thoroughly hashed out at the deliberative session, where people can figure out for themselves what they need to do. I heard a comment earlier from Selectman Acer about waffling. Well, it's not a question of not taking positions, I think in part a question of whether it's appropriate for this, like, with a negative recommendation on petition warrant articles to begin with. It's different from waffling.
This has a tax impact.
And you can communicate that tax impact, and the voters can still decide if they think that's worth it.
It has a possible tax impact.
Exactly. No, it has a definite tax impact.
We don't know how much the tax impact will be. It wasn't done speaking yet, but.
But you don't want it wrong.
And I should sometimes. Anyway. I'm going to reiterate what I said, because I think everybody got lost in the way. So the issue before you is to decide whether or not to have a recommendation on these petition warrant articles. They're going on the warrant anyway. I don't think it's necessary that you guys have petition warrant documents. That's my view. I'm done.
For sure. Thank you.
Possibly.
He will punish you if you keep asking.
I could go on for a long time.
This is not.
Not even strange.
Question, do we know how many, we know how many veterans in town are one hundred percent disabled?
The, last year was twenty-eight.
Has been the paperwork posted?
Yes. And as I say, that, you know, number, you know, it can be checked again, but the application for it is not till April fifteenth.
That's twenty-eight for the optional tax credit, the two thousand dollar issue, you mean?
It's like passing, so the impact is fifty-five, fifty-six thousand dollars. It's the same thing as passing a fifty-six thousand dollar warrant article earlier. That's the tax impact. I think a lot of people, you know, don't real, you know, the state says you can, you know, give a credit, or the other one is the exemption on property. You know, we do a hundred thousand dollars for elderly, which I think is excessive also. But people just think that the state says you can do this, so the taxes are forgiven, but they're not. The taxes are paid on that, a hundred thousand, or the two thousand has to be supplemented by others. So it's not like the town, the state blesses you and says, oh, you don't have to pay these taxes. It's, I think it's, you know, kind of not understood. So, we done here?
There we are. I think it's going to be one, zero, eight, eight.
Yeah, I just.
As far as the rest, it'll be the same thing. So you can go on it. We have anything else for the warrant articles? You done all the recommendations?
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else on warrant articles? Do business, let's move along. Alarm warning is, I think Dan Neary brought this up, because he wants to stop charging for burglar alarms and stuff like that, if it's excessive. A month ago, also alarms going out to specific properties, which had been a problem, particularly mayor Kurt Taylor, but last year they went up quite a bit, like twenty-five percent.
Well, he should have been charging, because Rick's been charging for ten years.
Any one of the forward, the, the audience that we have, and the, the audit says that we have an appeals board, but.
When? There's a when?
There's an appeal.
Right. Well, there's an appeal, and it'll take us two minutes to appoint one.
Any person agreed by decision who imposes the end of the permission to this ordinance may appeal this decision. Two hundred appeals board consisting of three members, who shall be appointed by the town administrator or the board of selectmen and confirmed by the board of selectmen. I'd like to at least have three people.
What's, I'd say it's the board of selectmen or the police chief, fire chief in town administrator. Where's the, what's the date on this?
Oh, it's like, oh, four, oh, one.
Rick Donovan's been charging ever since then.
But the police chief, fire chief shouldn't be on the.
I'm joking.
Okay.
And you can make it board of selectmen.
For some reason, Dan feels uncomfortable enforcing this, without having an appeal to, somebody that's going to be appealed to.
Somebody has to make it an appeal, and it's not going to be heard the next day, so we appoint an appeals board. The, as I say, Rick Donovan's been charging since this thing went into effect.
That might be successful, now that they have a point of appeal.
That's why I say, make it the board of selectmen.
Can we?
We can.
We aren't enforcing it. They are. They're the ones that have.
That was my initial thought until I just said, that's where you know you shall be appointed. Would you like to appoint the free selectmen as the appeals board of the alarm policy?
Sure.
All right. See, for board of selectmen, would you like to take a vote to confirm the appointment of Sarah?
By Sarah?
By Sarah? Would you make that motion?
Sure, I, you know, it's like, I'll make a motion that in accordance with the alarm policy, the board of selectmen, the, the board of appeals.
As opposed to myself? By the town administrator. So we follow the protocol, or do we not?
Yes.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No discussion?
We have an appeals board. Tell Dan and Neil, we have an appeals board, he should stop, warn the head of alarm violations, citations. That is simple. Good question.
Yeah.
Does that include first offenses? Is there any? No, it's, it's three false alarms before a violation is issued. This is specific on a month of money, but it continues. Maybe it should be addressed in the future. I don't know. If you've got, say you have an apartment building with fifty units in it, and you have four false alarms, you have four different apartments, it should be, should it be penalized? Well, maybe, maybe you should start incorporating that into the way. That's all. But if you expect the same person with four false alarms all the time, same unit.
Well, I would think that anybody who has a false, has three false alarms is adequate wine to get his alarm system fixed, or his process fixed.
Yeah, I would hope. It goes beyond that, Coach. It's cooking, smoke, it's bathing, it's hairspray, and you know, Frank L. Pierce goes through this all the time, referring stories.
Yeah, Rick actually said that he was going to have to amend it because they agreed to start charging on first offenses for certain things that they do at Frank L. Pierce.
Frank L. Pierce is much easier. You can just.
Yeah, you, you can get three offenses in one day.
I know.
But you just charge in the, like, when my kids went to college, where they paid so much for a month, in a fee. And then if they didn't have to pay any alarms and penalties, they get all of that money back at the end of the year in a big party. And if they blew it and they spent all the money, they got nothing. It's pretty simple. Just put it off those two. All right, let's move on. Auction property, fire company of Burn, twenty-two, twenty-twelve. Do you know what this is for Burn? I'm just extremely confused on this one.
Has Rick inspected the property?
Yes, he did. So this property is seasoned, and.
It's seasonal?
Seasoned for sale.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've had it for more than three years. And it is a camp that was built in nineteen thirty-nine.
Is that one?
Yeah.
That's listed as forty-four, it's from the building.
Oh, I'm sorry. I gave you the wrong address.
Okay, that's what.
That could be.
Sorry.
All right.
I just cut, I divided it in half.
You know, it would really piss on the office.
God, I'm hoping Rick went out and looked up the right one.
Yeah, I'm hoping Father Fire poppin'. Relighting it.
Was your address wrong?
He said the white one.
Who's his house?
Yeah, I gave him the right address. I'm going, oh my God, he said, is it the white one or the blue one? The white. Anyway, so this basically is a house lot. It's sandy soil out there. It does have a septic, whatever it is, but it is on town water, so even though it's a small lot. So to, I think to maximize the amount of money that we get selling it, and I, I suggest that we just do a sealed bid with the minimum. There's no reason to have it auctioned unless you want to run an auction. Anyway, Rick went out and said that he was interested in possibly doing some training, a couple of weekends of training, and then to burn it down. But he also said he needs to talk to Eversource, because you can see the power lines overhead, they have to be shielded.
And trees all over.
No, the trees are, you know, that's, that's part of the exercise. Anyway.
They can be protected.
So with the, you know, the value of house lots has doubled above this, you know, in the last, in his last assessment. So it, it will, we will get more money for it.
As a lot.
As a lot, rather than as a tear down, because anybody that puts a bid in on it, they're going to figure that it's going to cost them fifteen thousand dollars to tear it down, and if it's not there.
Is this the back of the house? I think it is.
Well, it could be.
I think there are one else in this house.
It's got two-by-fours across the door.
What about there, maybe more stairs or other?
Yeah.
Doug, we're going to fall down.
Yeah, well, it's in pretty bad shape. I mean, they've got the date, instruction date thirty-nine. But anyway, so if the board's interested, Rick said that before they can burn it, they have to get an asbestos.
Inspection.
Inspection, yeah. He said that it's like five to six hundred bucks. I think it's well worth it for the potential return on investment, and then possibly sell this in spring.
Well, so what would happen if they had asbestos?
It won't burn.
Yeah, it will burn down.
But what do we do with it?
Well, I don't think, Rick didn't think it did. I mean, there could be some somewhere, like, you know, the, the pipe could be A and C pipe.
Right.
Which is one, you know, best stuff in the world. But anyway, you know, he didn't think there was, just from his cursory look. But we have to authorize, you know, having the guy from Ashford do a come up and take a look at it, and then authorize the fire department to burn downtown property.
Yeah, no problem. As long as we have to operate property.
Yes, it is forty-four. See, it says town brand right there.
After the water.
Yeah. No, it does have, it does have, what, that's the other thing, why the, you know, it's a small lot, but, because it's really sandy out there. Wall did not reach ceiling.
This is the same property, I think. This house was actually moved here a few years ago.
Is that the one? I think we talked about that when we, when we accepted the deed.
She just indicated, why don't we move it back?
Yeah, well, they've got the. That's really kind of amazing, because it says, actual year built nineteen thirty-nine, effective year nineteen fifty-five. You suppose it was moved here in fifty-five? And it's twenty years old now. Of course.
Wouldn't survive a move now, I tell you.
Grayson's property, the old Greeks, was moved from Fog's Corner up to where it is. That was seventy-five or something. So are we good with having, make, doing the motions of, or cover the extent of the asbestos inspection?
Yeah, if Rick wants to go through this, he's what he is, Jerry wants to do this.
Yeah.
Make the motion. Do it in the bathroom, lock the door, please.
Yes, I will. Map forty-nine, lot fourteen. I'm doing this all in the motion. So I make a motion to authorize Chief Donovan to have map forty-nine lot fourteen inspected for asbestos, and to have training burn at property.
Do we have a second on that motion? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Tent to cut, not nine lots, eighteen and twenty-one. Here's some discussion on this. We all said on this cut? Do you intend to do a cut right now?
Well, they said start date like yesterday or something.
How much they cutting?
Forty. Starting what?
Forty right now.
Forty right now.
Proceed to Basin Hill Road, then turn right. Trying to figure where this is. It's up behind Franklin Pierce. No, 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 the other one, so you want to burn it down. Oh, it's off Woodbound Road, uh, out by the, uh, golf course. On a gopher. Yeah, no, it has, um, it actually has access to Lake Timbuktu. Okay. Twin Coes, Twin Coes. I was just trying to make sure that that's on the deed. Twin Coes. Twin Coes is, um, before, um, um, Golf Cart Lane, um, by the golf course. Yeah.
I think it's Carl Road to get to it.
K.
K A W L. I always thought it was Carl, just misspelled, but, you know. Carl Road.
Actually, I thought it came right on, is there just a sign for Twin Coes?
Yeah. Pretty sure. I've been down all those roads.
Yeah, 'cause there's a road that goes right down to the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it goes, you know, right down to the water.
Do we have any trouble with this?
No. My concern was access to it, but it's Chadwick Road, so.
It comes from Jaffrey.
Exactly.
Are there some motion?
No. Of yourself.
The intent to cut application.
With that motion to, um, accept the, uh, intent to cut on.
Approved.
Approved, that, uh, on map nine lots eighteen and twenty-one.
Do I have a motion, a second on that motion?
Yeah, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Information, communications, updates?
Yeah, assessing, um, so, the, uh, normally, uh, payments, which I've already, we've already gotten a couple of the payments across them. Dave used to, you know, just read them, if they seemed, um, reasonable, he'd make a recommendation, and, uh, otherwise they go to KRT, to their opinion. You know, I'm suggesting that maybe we, you know, I'll keep them in a certain thing, and, you know, we can read them, and decide whether, you know, we think they're reasonable requests, or be similar to KRT.
Did you get that?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you have any questions on, I mean, not.
Yeah, if you have any questions, go to KRT.
Just go right out to you.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think that, you know, this year it probably won't be bad, but next year it's going to be bad.
Yeah, that would change.
With, yeah, revale. The other thing is, um, uh, Rob from KRT just emailed me to find out how many tax cards were available. Uh, Remen's back today.
Oh, his service car.
Yeah. And he said that, um, he would let us know, but we need to post, because they're, um, um, they're gonna be going out in the field. And I'll be doing it by section, so, you know, we just need to make sure we posted, and have the police posted.
Yeah, but he's pretty good on the spread, right?
Yeah, now they're gonna start now.
All right.
Well, because they, they have to check measurements.
Rob from KRT knows to contact the police to let them know.
Yes.
What area he's gonna be in, so. When the police get the phone calls for the guy walking around, you know, that they know this is John from KRT that's up there. He's already checked into the deck. They, it's the same company, they know. That's fine, we'll post another website, the police will, as long as they go to file the police, whatever it will be.
Yeah, well, they'll probably, I think the cards that are done are, because the way our tax maps are, they start, you know, in the southwest corner, and you go across. So, we have one through four tax cards, I think he's done, unless he finished five.
All right, so what, Brandon, we'll get it all then?
Yeah, it was in today.
Uh, we have any other updates?
Yeah, uh, Rick committee, uh, had a meeting. And I made a extensive report on what we're doing this winter, um, Skida Crotch at Mountain, we have twenty-eight kits, um, for, um, basically chaperones. So, it's, you know, nice program. The, uh, they went to the conference, and Chris said that they're, he upped his budget for that, and he found very beneficial for both of them. Uh, they were able to actually go to different workshops, and compare notes, so, you know, instead of having just one person, this half of them, um, they were able to attend all the ones that they wanted to. Um, they reported on, um, the basically breakfast tree lighting, senior dinner, there was a, um, problem at the senior dinner with the police being called out just as they were delivering. And so we're looking into getting other people to help volunteer for that, you know, deliveries, and, um, talking to the Rams about it, and the Fire Association. See if we can get some off, off-duty personnel, uh, to be doing that also, it's close to Police Chief, um, who maybe tied up in something more serious. But they did about, they have about twenty-five to thirty deliveries, uh, and of course, that sort of thing needs to be timely, otherwise you have a cold theme.
Yeah. What's your thing? Did I say something to you today? I was just, I was just kinda giving an update on, kinda what I was working on. Yeah. Just kinda quickly, just, I mean, so we're getting one on the board notes. Obviously looking forward with all the enclosures, um, as we know, the D-Fib was delivered very quickly. The plow was installed, um, for the fire truck. Rob from KRT returned his, um, force inside, so the agenda is all set. And obviously, right now, I'm looking to finish the voters' guide as soon as possible, um, and collecting the current reports. I think we've, I've done five or six.
Very good. Can we get that, um, the database, the, um, property inventory database, probably assessing?
Oh. Ooh, that's gonna be.
Some sort of inventory, you want to talk.
No, that's, it's not that, it's, um, vision, we have not been updating with certain things. We've been doing updates in Avatar. It may not be accurate.
And you don't have.
Because I, oh, that was the other thing, I was gonna talk to the Avatar face, that it go live on, uh, public access. Because even though sketches aren't all done, vision is not, um, up to date, so kind of this transition limbo. In the courts. Yeah, I'll have to look, 'cause I actually did some updates in, in Vision today, um.
When was the last day we did updates in Vision? I have the idea, June, July, March.
Uh, yeah, I think it was, I'd have to look, I think it was mid-year. It was after the, after the tax bills were done.
Okay, so that was, yeah, yeah, the June?
Yeah.
All right, so I have to.
I didn't think about that.
We're gonna have to put a little, uh, deadline on it, if this is accurate. Add so, June thirty, June thirty-first.
June thirty.
Two thousand nineteen. So the date on the, the headstone of the Small Fox Cemetery.
Yeah.
It's twenty-third first. I had an update, uh, there was a town gun meeting, almost scheduled, almost had, and they don't remind anyone, I know it was shut up. So we're going to have it in February. So we like to have this, I would think, no year, but.
How did you know the one was there?
Danny and Nick, got a hold of me a while, half an hour ago, I wanted to be in sure that Danny's.
We have a meeting today.
Oh, it'll be too late, I don't think. All right, we have a meeting, business, come and be on the board.
Did you, um, where are you, um, with the screw up with the, I mean, the expenditures?
Yeah, I probably could've brought it tonight, but I didn't.
Not accurate.
I'm trying not to, yeah. Uh, I think it was, but I don't have any sure.
Don't rush it to the last second.
Exactly. Not to do that.
Yeah, well, this, um, you know, that changeover in the system, the auditors told, hoped to do it different, then it didn't work. So, it's redoing it. I love when they tell you to do that.
All right, I'll have to take the motion, would you?
I will make that move.
Second, all those in favor? All right. Uh, through the two of you, I get this from the Census Bureau. They want us to verify the map of the town. They said it's, it's maybe, yeah, they.
You have one up here.
It's, it looks like, right, it's kind of.
Yep.
So. So it looks good. The print, everyone that's expanded it, I haven't seen this in a while.
Yeah, I noticed.
Looking some style for it. They want, uh, they want us to verify. I'm going to do it, they want you to do it, because I. Teach people.
You need to work with them, right?
Oh, they're doing, by the way, no, it's, it's doing.
I'm either one of TC or an ETO.
They're getting a hundred, you have to get a hundred and fifty cards. With not much more feet, but a lot higher than that. So this is, this is to. You know, like, say, you know, what kind of.
So you can't, sure looks like that.
Yes.
You guys, you're using this one hundred and fifty dollars.
Twenty bucks to.
You're gonna think, uh. That's your county. Major, county on the other side. Six, six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Was happy to see it. Got it. Thank you.